Good morning and welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. Before I call on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call, I do want to welcome some special guests with us today. We have with us, this is Youth in Government Day in conjunction with YMCA here locally, and we have students from Gadsden City High School that are shadowing department heads and city council and mayor's office all day long. And there'll be a lunch afterwards at 2:10 on the tracks where our Chief of Staff for the administration Brett Johnson will be the speaker. But I just want to welcome you guys to a city council meeting. And if you will, stand and let everybody see you, just to, I want to know who you are from the, from Gadsden City High School. Thank you very much. Okay, back to the agenda. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Present.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Beck.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask one of our Youth in Government students for the day, Isaiah McFarland, to come forward and lead us in the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation.
Give us this day as we go through this day, Lord, and just in that we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and city council meetings held on April 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 14th through April 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations.
Good morning, City Council and everyone. We have two proclamations this morning. I'll read the first and then my Ms. Barton will join me and read the second this morning. On behalf of Mayor Craig Ford, I want to ask the Gadsden Public Library if you come forth. And I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the city, the Gadsden Public Library, along with its two branches, one in Alabama City and the other in East Alabama, provides the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passion and engage in lifelong learning. And whereas since 1906, the Gadsden Public Library has long served as a trusted institution in Gadsden and Etowah County for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, gender, or socio-economic status. And whereas the library strives to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the population it serves and ensures equity of success for all. And whereas the library adapts to the ever-changing needs of the community, continually expanding its, its collections, its services, and partnerships. And whereas the library plays a critical role in the economic vitality of Gadsden by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas the library is an accessible and inclusive place that promotes a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas the library is the cornerstone of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas the library, its librarians and library staff are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation this week to celebrate National Library Week. And now therefore, I, Craig Ford, Mayor of City of Gadsden, Alabama, hereby join the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming April 23rd through the 29th, 2023, as National Library Week in the City of Gadsden. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the Gadsden Public Library and its branches to explore the wealth of resources available. Presented this 25th day of April 2023, Mayor Craig Ford and Ivana Nelson, City Clerk.
Just a couple of quick words to follow up on the proclamation. Ruth, thank you very much and thank the mayor for the proclamation and city council as well. National Library Week, it's a big deal, okay? Big deal in the library world. So libraries across the country, public libraries, academic libraries, school libraries, we're all celebrating this week as, as Ruth mentioned, with that score of things that we like to support our community in doing. I would like to, to thank city council and the mayor's office as well for last Friday. That was a nice lead in to National Library Week. We had a golf outing with our library foundation and raised a good amount of money. So we achieved our goal, in fact, we exceeded, so thank you all for participating and, and helping us with that. This week and National Library Week to our community, like the, the proclamation said, come join us, come see the library. We've got a lot of activities going on, some contests as well, so put your names in the hat for some really, really cool prizes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation will be read by Ms. Barton, who aspires to go into law.
Hi, my name is Tichon Barton from Gadsden City High School. From the City of Gadsden, Alabama proclamation. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources, resources, and without copying strategies. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a health environment, a healthy environment. And whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease, and obesity, and risk behavior such as smoking. And whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families in raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social services, agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the community, the business community. And now therefore, I, Craig Ford, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, on behalf of the Alabama Department of Children Abuse and Neglect Provision, the Family Success Center of Etowah County, and the James M. Berry Center do hereby join the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In the City of Gadsden, I call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical faculties, and business to increase their proclamation of participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, presented this 25th day of April 2023. Craig Ford.
That's a, that's a wordy document. I know, I'm so sorry. My name is Emma Hazelwood Clapp. I'm the Executive Director of the Family Success Center. And in 2015, a law was passed in Alabama stating that all children between the ages of kindergarten through 12th grade needed to hear about child abuse prevention. It's called Aaron's Law. And we meet that component for our school system. We go and talk to all the children about what child abuse is, what sexual child abuse is, physical neglect, tell them what it is, because our kids don't know it's not normal until someone tells them that it's not normal. So oftentimes when we go and talk to these kids, and just this past year, we saw almost 15,000 children, and we'll see that much this year, if not more, because we're branching out into other counties as well. We will be that person to go and tell them, and after we tell them what it is, if it's happening to them, and if they need to tell somebody how to tell a trusted adult, we can then go in there and do that, they then come forward. They oftentimes will come forward after these lessons, and when that happens, they end up going through DHR, and then they'll end up at the Berry Center. So the Berry Center and Family Success do work together. We're on that front end, they're on that back end. And we just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging that today is Child Abuse Prevention Month, all of April. And this sort of launches our summer of awareness. So you're going to be seeing us all over this summer. We hope that you guys will come and participate in our upcoming activities. And because of your, our support, we're able to port some life-saving information into our children's hands. So on behalf of the staff of Family Success, I just wanted to say thank you, and to the mayor's office, and to Ruth, and to you who did a great job. And I'm going to let Robin say something really quick, and then I'll let y'all get back to your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I'm Robin Phillips with the Berry Center. I'm the community outreach advocate, and on behalf of the Berry Center, I would like to thank Dr., I'm sorry, Mayor Ford and the council, and even Ms. Ruth Moffett, for your continued support in our community and supporting the Berry Center. Just last year, we saw 301, we interviewed 301 children for forensic interviews, and then 1,053 of those children slash caregivers, we, we gave counseling, counseling to them. So, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous right now. But anyway, but thank you. And I will tell you that we have had a record-breaking year already with the Berry Center. We've already interviewed over 100 children, and that's more than we've ever seen, ever in this, in our time. So again, just continued support. We appreciate y'all so much and everything that y'all do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item eight is unfinished business. We have two ordinances that were presented last week for the first reading. Item 8A is an ordinance authorizing tax increment financing funds for expenditures related to US 431 turn lane improvements. This appropriates $45,470 in TIF funds to the street improvements account to fund an agreement for engineering services, services with CDG Incorporated, as authorized by Resolution Number R-174-23. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Total cost for this engineering service is $45,470. So I'm not, I'm not reading that correctly.
I believe that is. Heath, is that, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I'm sorry, okay, there we go.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
All right. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget. This transfers $500,000 from the general unassigned fund balance to the 2023 nuisance abatement demolition project authorized by Resolution Number R-172-23. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Total amount being transferred is $500,000. That's all.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Agenda item nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. This is for Smokehouse 227 LLC, doing business as Club Reload, located at 922 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, has applied for a lounge retail liquor license, Class 1. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution creating job classification. This adds the classification of assistant fire training officer at pay range 16. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So I, I asked for some information on last week to understand fully the job classification as well as the pay and things of that nature, as it was discussed in pre-council of this particular fire station at the airport and what it's transitioning to. But also, it gives the, the classification code, of course, identifies the position title, and then, of course, the pay range, which was given, if I'm not mistaken, between $19 and $34. And so I did receive that classification, and so I did, that understanding. And so, wanted to make, make clear that I supported that based off the findings and what was provided. So, thank you. I yield.
Have we made a motion on this? Are we in the discussion phase now? So does anybody else have any, are you through, Councilman Avery?
I yield the rest remaining, remaining of my time.
All right. Any, any other comments? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Agenda item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Greater Gadsden Housing Authority. This is for providing garbage collection services at Greater Gadsden Housing Authority facilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Agenda item 12 is reserved for new business. I believe we have one item this morning.
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution that was routed through the city clerk's office, accepting conveyance of property located at 1702 Peachtree Street. It's my understanding that there is a need for the property by the city. The house needs to be demolished that's actually on the property as it sits right now. So I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend rules in a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is reserved for department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any reports this morning from departments or committees or boards? So everybody will know how I feel introduced for the Youth in Government folks, and tell us, tell us who you are and what your department is.
Certainly. Good morning, council and audience. We're so tickled to have you with us here. We do this every year and really get a blast out of mentoring you all. I'm, I'm Public Works Director, and unfortunately, I didn't have a mini-me here this morning, but hopefully, hopefully next year. But Public Works, that is a large array of activities that we do throughout the city. It's everything from patching holes in the street, repairing sidewalks, cutting down trees that are on city rights of way, that's garbage collection, trash collection on the street, all your signage, all your signage and replacing signs, things of that nature. So we cover, and I know I'm leaving out probably half of the functions that we do, but we stay busy and we try to be proactive, and we try to, anytime we come up with something from the public, a request, which brings me to my next point. Next week, hopefully, we will have Jason here. He's our environmental services investigator for illegal dumps and things of that nature. He will be here next week to enlighten everyone on some activities we've got coming up. I don't want to steal this thunder, so I'm not going to speak of it this week, but we're still, he's still formulating some of this. I want to give you a report this, to tell you, kind of tied in what I was talking about, you can call us. If you have an issue, call Public Works, 549-4703. That's, that's our Public Works office. We will answer the phone, take the message. But I want to, want to tell you, large items, if you've got large items you want picked up, we have people contact us all the time. And as y'all probably know, our mayor is very serious about cleaning up the City of Gadsden. And I think that's, that's just music to my ears. But with that said, if you've got large items, give us a call. Chances are, we'll be able to come get it the following day, if not that day, if we're in the neighborhood. So we don't want mattresses, large, large items sitting out on the street. It just looks, looks cluttered. It looks unclean. I do want to remind you that this service is free to the citizens of Gadsden. We don't charge a separate fee like so many other cities, some, some surrounding cities do this also. This is all on your garbage fee. So a lot of times we get, and, and I want you to be patient with us, a lot of times we get complaints, well, you hadn't been by here in two weeks. Well, there's, you know, there's nothing really in an ordinance that says that we're required to pick this up, but we do it, and we want to do it. So be patient with us, especially in light of the fact, for instance, we have seven garbage trucks. Today, we started the day with only five. Two of them are in the shop. Last Friday, on our loader trucks, the ones with the claw, we've got nine of those on the road, and we had five of them start the day in the shop. So our fleet is old, it's in need of repair, repair constantly, and hopefully, council, you will see, see us to, on a new budget down the road that we can get some new equipment to better serve the citizens of Gadsden. But if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them right now.
Could get that number one more time.
Area code 256-549-4703.
Think now might be a good time to talk about jobs. I know you're constantly looking for employees, so you can have a shameless plug, if you will, for employees.
Thank you, Council President. As a matter of fact, we have a, an opening at the Forest Cemetery. We need immediate help. It's a full-time position. It comes with benefits, retirement, all the, all the things you'd expect with a good job. The good thing about the city, this is an entry-level job, but there's opportunity for advancement. See, that happened all the time. If you go out and prove yourself, do a good job, hopefully, you can move up down the road. But we are currently, currently hunting somebody to work at the cemetery, full-time. It's a good, got a good crew over there, they're just short-staffed right now. But we've, if you put in an application, send it to, you can pick up an application on the second floor in the Personnel Department, not just for that position, but any other positions that you might be interested in, because we have vacancies come up with retirements, things of that nature. So fill out applications, I'll be sure to look over those, and we'll call you in for an interview if we've got something available, so.
You know, on a personal note, this is to the Youth in Government students. Howell and I attended Diskew Junior High School together, and then we also graduated Gadsden High together. And so I think Howell, you've been with the City of Gadsden 30-plus years, right?
30 years.
So you probably didn't start as the Director of Public Works.
No, we didn't.
So to your point earlier, that the job's an entry-level job, but guys, you, you come to work at, at a company, in this case, the City of Gadsden, and today Howell Matthews are, is our Director of Public Works. And so we're, we're proud of Howell. He's, he's been a dedicated employee for the city for 30-plus years, and I've, I've done this for four years. But here we find ourselves some, almost 50 years later from our, our school days, just like you guys. So look around at, at each other. One day, two of you guys and girls might find yourself in a similar position where someone's sitting up here that's sitting out there, and then one of your friends or a longtime employee of the City of Gadsden.
That's true. We've got a crew leader that started out with maintenance here at City Hall, picking up paper, and he's my most valuable operator out at the landfill transfer station.
Wow.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any others, any reports? Okay. Then item 14 is remarks by the mayor and council. As you've heard, Mayor Ford is out today. We will have Brett Johnson, who serves as the Chief of Staff in the mayor's office, to give the mayor's remarks.
Sure. Obviously, today's Youth in Government Day. It's just an exciting day for me. I actually went through a similar program, Youth Legislature, and I'll be honest with you, if I hadn't skipped class that day to go to the meeting about it, which was my intent, I wouldn't be standing before you today. So I hope, hope somebody gets inspired today. I want to introduce you to the, what I would call the Youth Mayor, Jarrett Whaley, and let him just say a few words real quick before and announce.
Sure. Don't skip class, kids, by the way.
So as you heard, I'm the mayoral representative for Gadsden City High School. My name is Jarrett Whaley. I would like to thank Mr. Sullivan, I'd like to thank Ivana Nelson, Mr. Falcon, and of course, the ones before us who have allowed this program to expand, allow us to provide this unique experience, such as Ms. Hardwick, for example. She'll be mentioned later on in our mock meeting. So thank you very much.
And just on behalf of the mayor, one thing that's really important right now, to steal Councilman Robinson's thunder a little bit, maybe, the vandal struck again at Nakalula Falls. We are on the hunt, and as a result, Mayor Ford has put up a $1,000 reward from his office, which Crime Stoppers of Central Alabama is partnering to add another 500, for a $1,500 reward for any information leading to the arrest of persons or, or person involved with that case. So I just wanted to share that. Sorry?
Councilman Robinson did it. Who do I?
Come see me after, yeah. You got to get your case number.
$1,500 bucks.
But if anybody out there has any information, please call the, the tip line. It's on our social media. Central, Crime Stoppers of Central Alabama is where you want to go. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, well, this is time for the council remarks, and we'll just take it in numerical order. So Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck. Let me say to the Youth in Government who was present today, it has been a pleasure and a joy thus far to have you share with us today, and I look forward to your mock meeting later on today. I would also like to give a shout out to the Berry Center for what you do for young people as it relates to restoring them and healing them from tragedy. Thank you so much for that, and thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, want to thank Mayor Ford and his staff for all the work that you do, and certainly the city council. We appreciate all that you do. All the department heads, thank you again, all that you do on a, on a daily basis. Just want to thank all those who came from Gadsden City today. It's been a pleasure having you all here. Just really short. Just really sharp, just really bright and just enjoy spending the earlier part of the day with you and look forward to, to lunch as well. Couple of y'all ride my bus, wave your hand. Marbrae, Isaiah, couple of these students ride my bus every day. And so, they get a chance to see me in a different light today. But every day, when I get to Gadsden City, I don't let them off the bus and they'll tell you until I decrease certain things over them, that they're bright, they're smart, they're beautiful, they're intelligent, they can be doctors and lawyers, architects and engineers, blue collar workers, sheet rockers, plumbers, HVAC, every single day. I want them to get off that bus with that takeaway, knowing that it's embedded in them that they can become whatever they decide to do. So, if you decide to go into government, just realize that you can do whatever you set your mind to do. If it's not government, just find that passion so that you can truly do something that you love and enjoy. Also, good to see Mr. Reddick back there, Mr. Superintendent, good to see you as always and all that you do for the school. He's a big component of pushing these kids even to, to actually do something with their hand, to have a skill set, just be able to do something with your hand. I know he talks a lot about that, making sure that if you don't decide to go to school, college may not be for everybody, just be able to do something with your hands. So, he and I have had that conversation in the past. So, just want to tell you, thank you and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, want to reiterate the, well, let me do this first. Gadsden City High School, thank you all for being here. I too, like Mr. Johnson, was a part of you. This was, was the life of me, growing up through middle school, high school, thanks to Emily Hawke at that time, who reared me into this program with the YMCA, under the direction of Chris Thomason at that time and then the current, Mr. Leroy Falcon. Went all the way to Black Mountain and went all the way to DC as top debater and a whole bunch of other things. But started through this program at Emma Satsman High School, collaborating with Gadsden High and Litchfield at that time and, and we went down to Montgomery and re-rocked that place. So, hopefully, that you all will take what you're learning here. You go down to Montgomery, you lead there and then you go to the other entities that it leads to. And then, look, look at, look at me now. I was the student mayor at that time, so I'm not the mayor now, so. But best wishes to you. I want to acknowledge my mini-me, which was A.J. Tinker, who is not, who reminds me of myself of what he's doing currently. He is not only just a student, councilperson for District Three from your, representing from your school, but he's also an advocate of District Three. He's working currently in District Three. He's volunteering in District Three. He also has a non-for-profit organization that serves that community along with service that he provides all throughout the city of Gadsden. Then, I want to go and also brag on him, the good, that you all come from all good districts, but I'm just bragging on A.J. for a minute. A.J. has also been accepted to West Point. And so, I just want to continue to motivate, encourage and thank all you young people. But A.J., as a representative of District Three, we've got some good things to come out of, good people and good things that are happening in District Three. So, thank you, A.J. and continue going on as you all do the same, all right? Coming up, well, to Public Works' point on that phone number, I want to reiterate that to the community, for any, if you're cleaning out your house, whatever, those large pieces of, whatever he announced, would it come to mattresses and things of that nature, just please give Public Works a call. That number, again, is 256-549-4703 during operating hours so that they can get over to pick up that trash. It is, it is hideous to look at that stuff throughout the weekend. I don't know, I don't understand how some, sometimes when you know that you're doing work during the weekend, they get thrown out there on the weekend. So, we have to look at that all through the weekend, you know? So, make sure that you get Public Works that call. Again, that number is 256-549-4703 so that they can come and keep our community clean because we know that rodents, as it's been stated, and animals get to that stuff and so we'll have it scattered along with storms, winds and things of that nature. Tuesday, May the sixteenth, Tuesday, May the sixteenth, 12:00 PM to 12:30 at Carver Community Center, there will be a event, Coffee with the Cop. And so, that will be with the Carver Senior Nutrition Program. It's join your neighbor and Gadsden Police Department for coffee and conversation, no agenda or no speeches, in particular, just a chance to ask questions, voice concerns and get to know your officer. And so, again, that's Tuesday, May the sixteenth, at the Carver Community Center with the Senior Nutrition Program. And I want to thank all of those representatives for District Three that golfed at last minute in the golf tournament on Friday and the one on Monday. I was last minute with that, but I do think, and they said that they had a great time. And then, also want to appreciate, I can't think of his name right now, and it's going to be bad, that won the $5,000 for the 50-foot putt.
That was Jesse Ross from District One.
Mr. Jesse. He was my mailman for a long time. But a great shot, Ms. Ross, for that $5,000, one, one try, I mean, got it nail on the head. And so, just wanted to shoot out, shout-out to him for that. Thank you all, you're the regimental of my time.
Councilman Wilson? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Personal thank you to the Family Success Center and the Berry Center. That's been a cause that's been really close to my heart for a long time, so I love to see y'all succeeding and thriving. What you do, every time you come in and tell me that you've set another record, it's one of the only records that you never, ever, ever want to break. And it breaks my heart, man, to think that you guys are seeing more and more students that are faced with this reality in their home. But I appreciate the efforts to get out there and get in front of it and try to prevent it as quickly as we can and try to be as thoughtful as you can as these children go through what's a terrible, terrible time. So, thank you for your selflessness on that. Also, I just want to point out how funny it was when Councilman Smith recognized Superintendent Reddick in the back, how every one of y'all stood up in your seats right there. Y'all all straightened up when you realized he was in the back. But good to see, Mr. Reddick, I was out at the ballpark the other day visiting with Coach Brackett and picking up my new hat. And that baseball, softball complex over there, it's just unbelievable, man. And I had a good friend of mine who has children, he said, he's very involved in high school athletics all over the state of Alabama. He said, that's one of the nicest complexes he's been at, all over the state, so. And, not going to pat ourselves on the back, but that sound system sounded pretty good out there, too. I'm just going to say that. Anyway, Mr. Dayton, enjoyed my time with you today. I won't be here for y'all's mock meeting later on, but I know you'll do a great job. Really enjoyed getting to know you. You're a very bright young man. Really dig that wooden bow tie. I think that was a good, good choice this morning. The Public Works, Howell, I can't thank you enough. Last week, I had an issue with one of my constituents called about a tree. This thing's probably, what, 70 footer, 80 footer? I mean, just one of the biggest trees you've ever seen on the public right-of-way, right in front of their house. Lims that extended all the way out over the roofline of these individuals' homes. It was obviously dead. A call, sent a few pictures through the mayor's office and to Howell directly and, I mean, within no time, within a matter of hours, they were out there flagging off the, the power poles and setting up and they were back in just a couple of days to start the process of bringing that tree down safely before it fell and hurt anybody. That's kind of the stuff y'all don't think about that, that Public Works does. You know, it's not just about coming by on, to collect garbage, you know? I mean, these people, there, there's a life-saving component to them monitoring these trees that are in the right-of-way and making sure they come down safely before they fall, fall on people's property or, God forbid, an individual. So, thank you for reacting as quick as you did on that. And then, of course, congratulations to the library staff on National Library Week. I will be by, Craig, I don't, I should know the answer to this, but does my library card expire?
We do expire cards.
I may need to come in and re-up then.
We'll do that on Friday. I think y'all, most of you are joining us on Friday.
Sounds good. Thank you for everything you guys do for our community, such a, such a quiet force in this community. As somebody who grew up in a poor household, if it wasn't for the Gadsden Public Library and Alabama Public Television and, and, you know, public radio, I don't know where I would be in my life. So, I spent so many hours in that library because it was free, it was air-conditioned and I could, I could read books all day, all, at no cost to me. So, what a great service for this community. Thank you for everything you guys do. That's all I have. All right. Councilwoman Monatra?
And I'll just continue the love on Public Works. We have a great partnership with Tina King and with Howell and his whole staff. We had our Public Works Committee meeting last week. And one of the other opportunities that we have, and I know you see it every day, is with cardboard and the fact that we have a recycle center and we want cardboard. Sometimes cardboard ends up in that, that dump area that you see where the rest might be a mattress or, or some other object. But we have an opportunity and as city council members, we can partner with Howell and add cardboard trailers out in the community. Howell already has, I think, over fifteen or twenty that are already out in the community and they are for cardboard only, so that you don't have to go to the recycle center. And the opportunity for us to get that cardboard off the street and get it to a place that it needs to be is what we want to do. So, I just am encouraging all of our city council members to partner with Howell if you want a trailer or more than one trailer in your district so that we can help with that cardboard recycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, thank you, Council President Beck. Just a couple of quick announcements about our beautiful Nakalula Falls up in District Seven that keeps on getting vandalized, but we're going to get it cleaned up. I want to shout-out to Soul Cleanse Pressure Washing Company. Blake and him and his company spent, donated their time and their business there to help us clean up some of the graffiti this past week and I thought that was great of them to do that. Also, Nakalula Falls and the Alabama Cycling Association, we hosting around 600 kids from Alabama, Mississippi and Florida this weekend at our beautiful Black Creek Trails. Racing, racing on Saturday will be for the middle school and on Sunday for the high school and this is a free admission and we invite you all guys to come up and check that out. It's real, real cool. That's all, thank you.
Sounds like fun. I know that'll be well-attended. I want to also welcome Tony Reddick, Mr. Reddick, to our council meeting. I'd be remiss not hearing Youth and Government Day. Please, if you would come and share some information with us or if you'd like to speak, you're, you're welcome to. I know that's an impromptu request, I just want to give you the opportunity if you want to speak to your students.
Why don't we just send you off?
Yes, please do. We, Mr.?
Just want to say thank you to the city government. And I'm very proud of them. I appreciate the acknowledgement that when my name was called, they all stood up. I'm proud of you for that. Because we try to set an example for our children and we're, as my dad used to always say, elephant proud of them when they display the example that we set for them. That's just a level of respect that we require of them. We know that they're children. And then, they come here and see you and what you do for their city, something to make them proud of, to make them want to move forward in making our city greater than it is. I love to use a term that I got from Tavis Smiley several years ago, I met personally, and it meant more, talking with him personally about it, greater than your promise. And so, we try to make sure that what we do in the Gadsden City School System, it allows our children to see that they can be better than or greater than their promise, whatever that is. And I'd like to take, say that I take pride in trying to exhibit that to them on a daily basis. And perhaps that's why they kind of sat up a little bit. Thank you for all that you do. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Thank you. Well, just, I'm usually the last one to speak, so I'll be brief, but just, believe it or not, I'll be brief. Youth and Government Day, thank you guys for being here today. Thank you to your teacher and, and thank you to Leroy Falcon, who, gosh, has just been and continues to be an icon in our community. Anything you see that guy doing, it's good. So, if you see him doing something, you need to get behind him because you'll be doing something good. And we mentioned the Berry Center and his sweet wife is the Director of the, of the Berry Center. They've touched 301 kids this, this past year. Again, that's not a, a record that you're, that you want to brag on. We wish it was just one kid, but that's not reality. So, we are grateful for the Falcon family, what they mean to our community and for the Berry Center, for the Family Success Center. Y'all, those are critical components. We spoke to the youth and government students today about volunteering, that all of us up here, before we got up here, we volunteered for decades. Well, some of us decades, some of y'all aren't old enough to volunteer for decades, but, but that's, that's a key component of, of public service. What you see us doing up here is public service. So, I encourage you to find something you're passionate about and volunteer and, and get involved. Also, encourage you to pursue your dreams. I'm excited to hear about the young lady that wants to be an attorney. I have a daughter that is an attorney. And one, and at one point, she was, she was you. And that's what her, her dream was. So, guess what she did? She worked hard, she studied hard and she went to college, graduated, then she went to law school. And now, she's a practicing attorney right here in Gadsden, Alabama. So, you can, you can do that. Just pursue your dreams. Pursue your dreams and then work hard. Nothing comes easy. Everything requires hard work. Look for a mentor, look for somebody that's doing what you want to do and then say, hey, can I kind of come along beside you? Can you mentor me? That's, that's one of the greatest compliments you can pay an adult is, will you mentor me? I'd like to do what you do. I think you'll, you'll be pleased at, at the response. Move to Nakalula Falls, y'all, last week, I called it a national treasure and I'll be doggone, somebody goes up here and spray paints a rock again. I just don't get it. I just don't understand it. But our police department gets it and they understand it and they'll be paying somebody a visit pretty soon and we'll all get to see who made a very poor choice. And so, thank you in advance to our police for doing what they're about to do. Yesterday, I was excited to go to the Olive Garden Grand Opening. It's located almost a stone's throw from here. It just happens to be in District Four, of which I'm the councilperson for District Four. But y'all, it's about a, almost $5 million investment from Darden Hospitality in our city. So, thank you to Darden Hospitality, thank you to Olive Garden. They're going to employ a minimum of 150 employees. Starting wage is $15 an hour. It's a good place to work. I think they're still looking for a few people. So, it's just, you, you can't miss it. Brand-new sign, it's a beautiful building. They've just done a marvelous job and that's just a great upgrade for our community and we welcome Olive Garden to Gadsden. And last but certainly not least is Cantrell. He's the council president today. Proud of you and it's, it's been a pleasure to get to meet you and you're a very intelligent young man. I can, I can tell, you're going to do well. Just, man, find your passion, find your dream, continue to work hard. I can tell you already work hard, just continue to work hard. I had inadvertently scheduled an appointment with somebody from out of town that's coming to Gadsden today to look at Gadsden in the hopes of bringing film and movies to Gadsden to be produced here. Gadsden, y'all, Etowah County is a marvelous place. We have everything. We have everything from rolling hills and prairies, we have mountains, you know, we have a 90-foot waterfall that nobody else has in the state of Alabama. We have a river, we have hills, we have old buildings, we have new buildings and we're going to pursue that as, as a city. That's an industry that should be in our city. So, I will, I'm remiss that I won't be here for the council meeting today, but know that I'm working for, on behalf of you and maybe one of you might be in a movie one day. I've already told this person, I've got the perfect face for radio, so I think I've eliminated myself from any kind of consideration. But we're very proud of our students, we're very proud of our high school. Mr. Reddick, you guys continue just to do extremely well. We've got such a good product, you know, the $35 million Advanced Manufacturing Technology Center that's, that's, that's being built over at Gadsden State Community College, the announcement just recently of our new fire department program in conjunction with the Gadsden City Schools. Just, there's always continued excitement and positive things coming out of our city. There's Chief Reed. Chief Reed, thank you for your contribution to the, to, to... Chief Reed, thank you for your contribution to that program and I know that's going to yield fruit for our fire department. Great careers, y'all. I mean, if you really want to serve, walk a mile in a fireman's shoes one day. That's what a calling that that is and it's such a needed component of providing, you know, a city provides, we're to protect and serve. So, the police protects, fire department serves, of course, along with Public Works and other departments. We're always looking for new firemen and we're looking for new policemen. They're very noble careers and you can go home every day, very proud of yourself for putting in a good days and hard work on behalf of the city of Gadsden and the people that live here. So, with that being said, we're going to meet our deadline. Councilman Avery, you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah. Just love working with these guys, but I like to give honor where honors due as well. I decided to not do it during my announcements, but I thought I would be a hater if I wouldn't do it, so I'm going to do it because he's an Auburn guy. And so, one of the guys up here, I want to give a big shout-out to Jason Wilson for being Auburn University Young Entrepreneur of the Year, so, man, congratulations. Roll tide.
I knew you couldn't get out of there without a roll tide.
Mr. President, can I please say something before you dismiss? There's too much Auburn going on up here today. Thank you, Mr. President. We had Walter Lewis in the building today. Y'all clap your hands.
Yes, sir.
We had Walter Lewis, former Alabama quarterback. I don't know if he's still here or not. Okay, but anyway, just want to say, speaking of that new field, that Gadsden City, I'm not sure if we do, do we have banners out there on both fields? If not, we need to get them on softball and baseball.
I agree.
I'm not sure, but I haven't seen them yet, but we need to make sure we get the biggest banner out there.
That's right. That's good. Well, thank y'all again and thank you for being here. Have a great day. We stand adjourned.